Rest of the board, we are at 5:35, Florida. I call this meeting to order.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
And Mayor Morrison.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have four out of the five council members here. Thank you all for being here. We do have a quorum. We will go ahead and proceed, counsel. We are on approval of agenda as written or with amendments. This is item number four on the agenda. Are there anything that we would like to change? Any requested changes? Any emergency items or anything hot that needs to be added or addressed? Now is the time.
I'll make a motion and we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Protim Kellum, second by Councilmember Willis to approve the agenda as written. Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk.
Councilmember Jackson.
Four.
Mayor Protim Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
And Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Synonymous.
Okay. Agenda is approved as written, 4-0. Now going to the presentations portion of the meeting. This is numbered as number five on the agenda. We have 5A, B, C, and D. The first presentation is 5A with the A1A pedestrian hybrid crosswalk submitted by Councilmember Willis, which is a discussion or a presentation on the pedestrian crosswalk in the efforts to secure a signalized pedestrian hybrid beacon crosswalk at Taylor Avenue. Councilmember Willis.
Yes, and thank you all for being here. After joining the city council in 2021, I was appointed to the Space Coast TPO governing board by council and tasked with continuing council's effort to bring about improved safety features along State Road A1A in Cape Canaveral. In 2022, city council adopted Vision Zero FDOT initiative, which was a commitment that no roadway fatalities or severe injuries, whether vehicular or pedestrian, were acceptable. In 2022, the city asked Florida Department of Transportation for additional safety considerations for State Road A1A via Resolution 2022-16, which was approved by the city. This resolution listed priority items for public safety improvements, including signalized pedestrian crosswalks at various locations within the city along A1A. And throughout my tenure on Space Coast TPO, I've continually advocated for improved safety features along A1A and for funding of these improvements through the Space Coast TPO and FDOT. The issue of pedestrian safety gained more prominence in February 2023 after a high-profile pedestrian fatality, Mr. Bill Grover from Seashells Community. The city council of Cape Canaveral modified and updated the city's list of State Road A1A improvement priorities, with the main priority being a target speed of 35 miles an hour. Since 2023, there have been six pedestrian instances on A1A within the city of Cape Canaveral, resulting in injuries and one fatality. In September 2023, the city reaffirmed Resolution 2023-02, updating the city's list of State Road A1A priorities, and directed staff to advocate for the advancement of two signalized pedestrian crosswalks at State Road A1A and Taylor Avenue and State Road A1A and Hayes Avenue. Following this, the FDOT performed a pedestrian study in the area. The pedestrian study prompted an FDOT design consideration of pedestrian refuges in the Taylor Avenue and Hayes Avenue areas, constructed in the center-turning lanes of these areas. In September 2023, Resolution 2023-02 was reaffirmed, making a formal request for signalized pedestrian hybrid beacons at Taylor Avenue and Hayes Avenue, as the refuges were considered short of the safety features needed in this area. The public, excuse me, the pedestrian refuge designs were presented to the public by FDOT in August 2024 and received public input. All available funding options were pursued to accomplish the design and construction of the needed pedestrian hybrid beacon crosswalks for the area. After being asked to join FDOT District 5's Central Florida Safety Steering Committee in October, I continued to advocate for improved safety features in Cape Canaveral along A1A, which resulted in a design proposal from FDOT for a pedestrian hybrid beacon crosswalk at Taylor Avenue in late August 2024. And through the efforts of Georgiana Gillette, who is here and will make a presentation in just a moment, the Space Coast TPO director and staff, funding was made available by the Space Coast TPO to the city of Cape Canaveral for the needed pedestrian hybrid beacon crosswalk at Taylor Avenue and A1A. After discussions with Space Coast TPO and FDOT project managers and engineers during the TPO Long Range Planning Subcommittee meeting in January 2025, this crosswalk, project number 452688-2, was confirmed as part of the FDOT projects, number 452688-1, for safety improvements and roadway resurfacing on State Road A1A from 520 to George King Boulevard, with the anticipated letting date of December 1st, 2026. I want to give you just a little information on what it takes. There are seven FDOT districts in Florida competing for federal funds and state funds. In District 5, which we reside, there are five TPOs, MPOs vying for that funding within State Road, within District 5. The Space Coast TPO, one of those five, has 14 government agencies and municipalities seeking their part of those funded transportation projects. So it's not an easy proposition to get any money when you have to go through all of that. But I want to give some special recognition for their contributions to this effort. Lexi Miller, our former Cape Canaveral city manager, was Space Coast TPO Technical Advisory Council member. The late Arlen DeBlau, who was a former Space Coast TPO Citizen Advisory Council member. Georgiana Gillette and staff of Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization. Celine Bounds, FDOT District 5 Scoping Manager. Lori Trebbets, FDOT's District 5 Roadway Design Supervisor. And Mike Sanders, FDOT District 5 Assistant District Traffic Operations Engineer. And Commissioner, Secretary John Tyler, FDOT District 5 Secretary. And also members of the Seashells Community for their patience and their assistance in putting this forward. It's been something that this council has wanted and has asked for. We've made multiple requests of FDOT, and I think we are about to see some fruit here. And I would like to invite Georgiana Gillette to add the TPO's view on this effort.
Mayor Morrison. So appreciative of you. We are the Regional Transportation Planning Organization here for Brevard County. And really what that means is we plan, prioritize, and fund transportation projects with our partners. And one of our big partner, of course, is the Florida Department of Transportation, as well as our cities. The city of Cape Canaveral has been a tremendous partner. We care about safety. It is our top priority. We have a very robust Vision Zero initiative. I know you've heard us talk about Vision Zero before. But we've been partnering with our communities, really, for years and for decades. Between 2018 and 2022, 2,744 people died in Brevard County or were seriously severely injured. And that's a big number. Last year alone, 88 people died in our county, and 27% were our most vulnerable road users, meaning people walking and biking. So when you think about the 2,744, that's one of the cruise ships, one of the smaller cruise ships here out of Port Canaveral, which is really unheard of. So Vision Zero Initiative, it really emphasizes on sharing responsibility between those who design the road and those of us that use the road. So you can build the safest road in the world, but if you're not abiding by the laws of the road and you're not paying attention, it really doesn't, it doesn't do you any good. And so we all have a part to play. We all, you know, safety is a shared responsibility. We were one of the first in the state for all 16 of our municipalities, Brevard County and the Brevard County School Board, to adopt Vision Zero. So that was a big effort. And we, we get gold stars all over, you know, DOT talks about it. We were the first out of the gate, but really, the work has just begun. And you all here at the city have been right there with us, and I can't thank you enough for that. So thank you for your leadership and commitment. I am very appreciative of Councilmember Willis because he's been, he's been very strong in building that relationship with FDOT upper management, because really, he's been one of the biggest advocates for safety for, for A1A. Building that relationship with DOT, I can tell you, is very important in the process. I know firsthand. And we have to keep the lines of communication open and constantly look for opportunities to fund transportation, because as Councilmember Willis said, it's very competitive. And so we got to look for all opportunities. He also was on, was asked to join the DOT's Central Florida Safety Steering Committee, which is a group of elected officials, which has really given us a lot of positive exposure. And really, he's very well-respected, and it is important for Cape Canaveral, and I'm very appreciative of that. And he's given some great presentations. So at the end of the day, whether we're talking about the A1A intersection realignment at International Drive, which by the way, is fully funded, as you all know, in fiscal year '26, '27, that begins July 1 of '26, or the longer-term curb and gutter project, which, you know, we don't have right-of-way or construction funded yet, but it's a process. You know, we, we just, we keep chipping away at it, one project at a time. The proposed pedestrian hybrid beacon crosswalk that Councilmember Willis just mentioned, just south of Taylor, it is being designed as part of the big resurfacing project that DOT is doing. And, you know, we've told DOT that we want to be a partner. We want to fund that, because the DOT is paving the corridor. They're putting in, you know, curb ramps. They're bringing it up to safety standards, but they did not have the additional money to put in that pedestrian crosswalk. And so the construction of it is roughly around $475,000. And to incorporate it into the resurfacing, that is also going to take place in fiscal year '26, '27, same timeframe, really, within a few months of the intersection realignment. You know, we want to put our actions, really, with our words. And, and so we're just very excited that we were able to do that. Because we have a lot of new members on our governing board, we'd like to get the blessing of the governing board at the April 10 meeting, just so they understand that council and the community supports the project. That's very important to them. And I know that this has been a long time coming for you guys. And I, I tell you, this is a very important project, I think, for the overall vision of A1A, because not only will it improve safety for pedestrians and bicyclists, but it will provide that traffic calming measure and ultimately slow speeds as a pedestrian hits the light and crosses the road. And at the end of the day, if the goal is to reduce the speeds, this is one of those tools, one of the countermeasures, that allows the DOT to actually put up a lower-speed-limit sign, which is what the city's been wanting for, for many, many years. They say they can't do it because, you know, just because they put up a sign doesn't mean people are going to drive what they feel comfortable driving. And so this is just one of those tools, but you know, things are happening, you know, between the resurfacing and this pedestrian hybrid beacon and pedestrian crosswalk, and then the big realignment project. And you know, the realignment project construction is 9.8 million. The right-of-way for that project alone is over 7 million. And the resurfacing project is 5.9 million for construction, not including our commitment for the construction for the PHB and the crosswalk. So I just want to thank you all for all that you've done. And I know Councilmember Willis has been to more meetings than I can count in just working through the process of just talking to people and just trying to get these projects funded as far as incorporating this PHB and other things. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gillette. Any questions, Georgiana?
I have, I have a one question.
Yes, Mayor Protim Kellum.
Um, yes. In our Resolution 2023-02, we, we identified four possible crosswalks. And the one that concerns me a lot, I live down that way and see it all the time, is at the Burger King and the bus, is that still part of the plan to put a crosswalk there? Because we, with the hotels down there and the workers that come on buses, they're crossing the highway, and I'm just like, oh, my gosh, you know, all the time. And, and the speed that are people are coming off the overpass is really concerning. So I, I think that should be a priority as well, if possible.
Well, in the, in the big curb and gutter project, there was a whole host of improvements that were proposed. And so, you know, I don't specifically remember if there was one at that location.
There was, there is one in the plans at the very northern end of the city on A1A, just, just slightly north of Burger King, as I remember.
That sounds right, but I was not 100% sure. So, you know, this project would give us, give us a buffer until we can actually get the larger project funded at some point in the future. And, and it may open things up, you know. Once you get one in, it has a tendency to just, you know, if everyone is comfortable with it and it's well-used, which the pedestrian counts say that it would be without question.
Right.
And the overall vision of the city, I think it will open up a lot more opportunities.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you so much for your, for being here for us and everything. We appreciate all the work that you and Councilmember Willis have done. And my concern, I was fairly concerned with that Burger King crosswalk, because literally, the speed limit is like, that is just hysterical. No one, no one goes the speed limit, and if you go, the speed limit cars are on your, on top of you. So that one concerns me, that it, the safety on it. Also, and I found this when we had our community, our public hearing or public meeting about this at our community center, is that the areas that were observed by FDOT were observed in May. And that's really concerning to me, even in the photos that are in that resolution by City Hall, there's no traffic on the roads. May is one of the, the months where the kids are still in school, our snowbirds have left, our spring breakers are gone, and our traffic is low. And so I'm, as I look at the locations of these and the statistics in the tables that are here, it makes me question whether you all saw it at its worst, because, or whether FDOT saw it at its worst, because February and March are absolutely the worst times of year for the, for people trying to cross. I had a citizen talk to me, actually, yesterday, and she says she sat through the light at Central and A1A, two light cycles, because our snowbird guests were trying to cross the road to get across the street to eat. And by the time she would let them get across, the light would be red again, meanwhile backing up traffic on Central where people are commuting, trying to get to work, and that kind of thing. So I have a little bit of a concern with the fact that these observations took place in a month where there wasn't, there's not very much traffic on our roads during that time. They're not seeing the peak-heavy traffic at that time. So that was a little concerning to me, and I had, you know, I had some concerns with that.
Sure.
Will there be possibly any other observations made? Because we've got a, we've got a work product, you know, with a plan, and I think these are good plans. However, we've seen sister cities with some of their FDOT projects that are not having all the success that maybe was intended. One of them is pedestrian crosswalk, and they've had multiple deaths since that crosswalk has been put in. Luckily, we aren't in their situation, because their situation is to get to the beach, you have to cross. Ours, you know, that's different for us, and that's helpful. And we certainly want our citizens safe. We do have a lot that cross from the mobile home parks and from the west side over to go to Friday Fest and things of that nature. And then recently, in Cocoa Beach, they put in speed bumps that, and after the first boat flew off a trailer, now they're removing the speed bumps. So, so the May worries me a little bit that you didn't see it at its worst.
Well, the department is working with the, with the city of Cocoa Beach on that. I know it came up, actually, at our governing board meeting, and, and so they're working through that to, to provide another option. And what, what specific crosswalk were you talking about, the fatalities?
The fatalities are for, hold on. The fatalities are on one of the ones, well, one of the ones, but several of the ones down in Satellite Beach. And they, and they've had several fatalities at those crosswalks. And, and I'm, I'm not being negative. I think we need to do something.
Sure.
I'm just raising the concerns as I've seen them up and down in our area. And the fact that this was done in May, because you weren't seeing the worst, they weren't seeing the worst of the traffic at that time.
Well, I will tell you that the Florida DOT, we're constantly looking at A1A. And another thing that they will be looking at is before and after. So once that crosswalk gets put in, they will be monitoring it. They will ensure, you know, are people adhering to it? Do we need to do special pop-ups? Do we need to stand out there, which many times the TPO and the DOT have been out on the side of the road, even with our cities, to educate folks.
And what would happen if we put one in, in a location, and this is just a hypothetical, we put one in, in a location that in May, that's where a lot of crossing happens? But then in February, when we have a different set of people here, we find that, oh, there's a whole bunch of people crossing at a different spot that are not in a crosswalk. Would we look at planning more? I mean, would we look at moving?
This is just the first step.
Okay.
And now you all know, and I, Councilmember Willis, you may want to chime in on this particular location, but they look at high pedestrian traffic.
Okay.
The department's not going to put in a crosswalk unless it meets a high pedestrian traffic area. And of course, with the Friday Fest and, and all of the
Right.
fabulous events that you all have here, that just adds to it. But, you know, Councilmember Willis, I don't know if you want to.
Well, one thing we need to also consider is that the plan for the north half of A1A was reliant upon a bump out at the port on A1, on 528, bumping it out, slowing speeds. And if you're not going to have that, it's, or until you get that, it's going to be very hard to put a pedestrian hybrid beacon near Burger King, because traffic's just going to be coming over the hill
Right.
quickly. And that just has a cascading effect as you go further south on A1A from that point. Now, there's several other places where Georgiana and I have talked about it that we'll be advocating for on the north half, but a lot of that is going to be dependent upon what FDOT does or when they plan to do the northern part from North Atlantic Intersection, the realignment all the way to the port. So those, those things are basically kind of holding that up. So we had to get what we could get, when we could get it, as quickly as we can get it. And that's, that's where we are.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, and I have one more thing, which I'm, I'm the curious one that always looks everything up, and I'm not being negative.
That's all good.
Thank you. I know, I looked into Vision Zero, because I was curious about it. I'm a new council member, so I'm trying to learn a lot. And it is a push for zero deaths from Sweden. And I traveled pretty extensively to Europe, and their roads are quite different than ours. And I noticed that it is a push globally. So it's a global program for, for zero deaths. And then I saw one of the early adopters was New York City.
Yes.
And it actually made their death rate go up. And that's why I was asking about some of the questions of how we do modifications. They actually went in and abandoned it after several years, I believe it was 2016, that they abandoned it. So Brevard is so different.
It's not New York City, that's for sure.
Yeah, exactly. It is very different. And we are highly reliant upon our vehicles in this county. And so as we look at things like the slowing the traffic down, I can't remember the term that you said, and those types of things, we have people, and we found this with Cocoa Beach, where they were given a lot of feedback of not being happy with the minimum, minimum speed limit being 30 going through downtown Cocoa Beach, because people commute from Cocoa Beach and Satellite Beach out to the Space Center. So as we look at this, how will we ensure that that traffic continues to flow with a reasonable expectation of being in the same timeframe for commute times for our space workers?
The one thing the department does not want to do is to reduce travel time. You know, it's travel time reliability. This is one, one of the performance measures that the DOT has, and it's one of the performance measures that the Space Coast TPO has as well for, for our plans. Now, if you're slowed down for a minute and it saves a life, then so be it.
Right.
You can just, you can just leave work just a little bit earlier to save someone's life. So at the end of the day, that's what Vision Zero is. It's about making sure that our family members and our residents, our visitors can actually go home alive or not get severely injured. That is what Vision Zero is about. The DOT has named theirs Target Zero. It means the exact same thing. You know, the reason why we went on the, on this, this initiative was because back in 2016, I don't know if you've heard the Dangerous by Design report by Smart Growth America. It listed all of the urban area, urban cities like Palm Bay, Melbourne, Titusville, as our urbanized area. It identified Florida, it identified the nation, and basically 10, excuse me, nine out of the 12 top urbanized areas for pedestrian danger index was in Florida. Brevard County was number two. That is why we started this effort, is to really say, look, we can do better than this. Orlando was number one. And in fact, I remember the Orlando Sentinel had a big article, you know, blood in the streets, dangerous by design, which is not anything anyone wants to, to hear. So it really, you know, it shocked a lot of people. We knew we had a problem. I don't think we realized it was on that level, once you start comparing it to the nation. And Florida is basically number one in the nation in pedestrian fatalities. So we have made tremendous strides. We're getting better. It takes time. But, you know, we are an, you know, we're a road-based society. You're absolutely right, Councilmember Jackson. But this is why we have to look at all, you know, modes of transportation, and we have to be safe for all modes. And, and we have to do what we can to improve safety. And, and we have to do what we can to improve safety. And we don't want to, we want to move traffic. That is important to the department, but it is about balance. This is, you know, think about where we're at here. And, you know, we have so many tourists here. And I know that this is important to you, to, to make sure our residents and our tourists are safe.
Well, and one thing I was really amazed, actually, as I started researching this, is on the 20, the January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2022, average per year totals on crashes, not necessarily deaths on crashes, was 2.3. And that's really low, average per year. And this is on page five of the, the report. So I was pretty amazed. However, when I saw the map, I noticed there were seven right in that area where you all are talking about putting that, the first pedestrian island, cross. But I, I think the numbers are fairly low, but that's apt to change with the amount of hotels that we've had added, so.
This is in the pedestrian, this is the DOT's report?
Yes. It's on page five of the DOT report.
And I think that's crash rate. And so when you look about it in the big scheme of things?
It's, it gives the type of collision, the average per year, the severity. The number of fatalities during that period were zero, but the 1.3 for the injuries, it gave wet and dry conditions, daylight, dark, which several of them mentioned that darkness was a thing. So lighting is important too there. But the numbers are low. And I had noticed that when they met with us in the community center for a several-year period in a tourist town with A1A. One is too many and especially, we don't want anyone harmed, but fatalities too many. But the numbers are really low. So I don't want to see them go up, is my, my whole point.
Very good point, very good point. And I'm glad that, you know, we can start implementing projects that, you know, the city knows is important and that there is a need prior to someone actually losing their life. I think that is really kind of where we're, we're all at right now.
That's all I had. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Any other questions? Ms. Gillette here today?
No, I thank you for all your efforts and, and thank Dawn for staying vigilant on the A1A safety. We, it's very important in our city, so.
It is.
Thank you so much.
For your support. We really appreciate you.
Yes, thank you very much, entire Space Coast TPO. Wonderful. That concludes the first presentation on the A1A pedestrian hybrid crosswalk. We now have a presentation with Sea Grapes from the University of Florida Institute of Food and Agricultural, UFIFAS, Brevard County Extension, showcasing the best management practices regarding beachside sea grapes.
Hello?
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Morrison and council for having me here tonight. My name is Holly Abils and I'm with University of Florida IFAS Extension and Florida Sea Grant. And I am happy to talk with you tonight about sea grapes. I just wanted to let you know that I've been working with Zach Eichols for many years on the Rain Garden Veterans Memorial Park. So I'm happy to be here today to talk with you all about another subject besides Rain Garden, even though the Rain Garden is amazing, so. So I wanted to just come to talk with you today about sea grapes along our coasts. And as a marine biologist, environmental scientist, and with University of Florida Extension, one of my biggest jobs really is to provide education to the public and especially about our coastal ecosystems, which is my background. So you guys are probably all very familiar with sea grapes. They are a native tree found in our sand dunes in Florida. And I, yes, and next slide. Perfect, okay. I can kind of see it from over there.
Holly?
Yes.
I'm very sorry to cut you off. I just want to see if we can get this monitor. I noticed yours is off, so that we can follow along with you.
Oh, it's on the back. I got it. They, they went off there. I think we got power. Okay, we're with you.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome, of course. It does help always to see the presentation. I know it's in the agenda packet as well, so if anyone's curious to get it later. But yeah, so sea grapes, they are a native tree here in Florida, found in our sand dunes. They're more of a subtropical tropical plant, so they don't tolerate freezing, kind of similar to our mangrove species. But they do have a very high tolerance to both salt and drought. Many species of plants that are on our dunes do have to tolerate both of those things because it is a very dry environment. And they have these really large, beautiful round leaves and can reach pretty great heights, up to 50 feet. I'm sure you've probably seen some along A1As or driving down the coast, some pretty tall sea grapes. Next slide, I think? Yes, perfect. So one of the reasons why I like to talk about plants, especially along our coast, is because they do provide a lot of services, not only to us, but of course to wildlife. So they are a habitat for birds, gopher tortoises, and butterflies. They are so named sea grapes because of these green grapes that hang from the tree that sort of do look like the grapes you might find in this, in the grocery store. They do turn purple when they mature. They're often used in jellies and in wines, if you've ever had a chance to taste that yourself. But that fruit is readily eaten by birds, mammals, other wildlife. And one of the important things that they do that I don't think a lot of people are aware of is the tree itself, because it's large and it has these large leaves, they actually help prevent artificial light from our properties from reaching the beach. And this is actually really important for protecting sea turtle nests, both the females that are coming on the beach to lay their eggs, but also the hatchlings that are hatching and then making their way to the water once they hatch. Next slide. So I did want to just specifically talk about sea turtles and, or sea grapes and sea turtles because this isn't something that's very well-known, but they do act as a natural barrier that blocks the artificial light from nesting beaches. So if you are trimming or removing them, you might be increasing that illumination level on the beach and deterring nesting or disorienting hatchlings. Because of this reason and because sea turtles are protected, there is, they are protected, sea grapes are protected under Florida statute because of how they do reduce that artificial light from getting on the beaches specifically related to sea turtles. So I list here the Florida statute related to that. So because of sea grapes helping with that artificial, reducing the artificial light, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, which manages our wildlife here in Florida, and sea turtles, has some trimming guidelines that they have listed just to help people think about when they're trimming their sea grapes, sort of best management practices. So the next three slides are just a couple of diagrams related to this. So this first one is just before sea grape trimming, seeing how high the sea grapes are. And of course, this house isn't able to see the beach because of how high the sea grapes are. So there's considerations just taking, thinking about how best to trim in order to be able to see the beach from the home, but also to reduce that lighting from getting on the beach. So next slide. The next one was going to be showing just sea grape trimming to the point where it's lowered so low that the lighting from the home actually starts to illuminate the beach. And so this is where it could be problematic for introducing that light to the beach and harming sea turtle nesting, both the females coming on the beach to lay their eggs and the hatchlings getting into the water. And then the last one in this, or go back one more, please? So this is just showing some trimming that can still occur, so you're still reducing the height of the sea grapes. So that way, at least in this instance, the second floor of this home can still see the beach. And then just ensuring any light that might be on those upper floors is directed away from the beach, so you can still have that, that view, but just reducing the lighting that's going on to the beach to help with sea turtle nesting. And then the next slide was just a graphic from FWC's website showing, you can go on their site to look at basically the nesting beaches that the Florida Fish and Wildlife manages. So they have various entities that go out and count sea turtle nests. You probably have probably all seen if you've lived here, going out on the beach during sea turtle nesting season and see sea turtle nests marked off. So Cape Canaveral is one of those nests, those beaches that is monitored during sea turtle nesting season. So that's just something to be aware of as you're thinking about any lighting that is going out on the beach during sea turtle nesting season. So next, thank you. So the other way that sea grapes are listed in the Florida statute as far as being protected is because, as with many plants that are along our shorelines or along our coasts, they are, they do help protect any property that's behind them. So in this case, they're helping to protect from salt spray, erosion, sand, and storms. So they do stabilize the beach and the dunes, so they do help to keep the sand in place as well as when the sand or when wind is blowing sand up or up on the beach, they help to kind of be a break for that sand to drop down and build the dune even higher. So they help prevent erosion. So for this reason, because they are helping to stabilize the dune, they are protected under Florida statute 161. And this relates to dune plant maintenance specifically and trimming. So the next slide. So this is on the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, so we're sort of moving regulatory agencies here to their dune plant maintenance guidelines. So this is under the Coastal Construction Control Line. And any plants, or specifically here, sea grapes and sea oats are protected under the statute. And with sea grapes specifically, there's guidelines related to trimming. This also means that when trimming does occur, a permit needs to be, you have to go through the permitting process with Florida Department of Environmental Protection. A permit to trim these plants in general, but also a permit going through the Coastal Construction Control Line permitting process if the plants are east of that line. So that I just highlighted under here, that under the Florida Ministry of the Code, sea grapes and other dune plants are protected and that any property owners or agents can't cut down or damage beach dune plants without a CCL permit. So having a trimming permit and then a permit through the Coastal Construction Control Line to permit. So there are exemptions. And when I mean exemption, I mean that when you apply for your permit and you list in your permit the guidelines for how trimming is going to occur, if trimming occurs under these exemption criteria, then you can get an exemption and be able to trim according to these specific guidelines. So normally, the plants can't be trimmed unless they have these, they're following these specific guidelines for a trimming process. So that is what I mean by exemption. You still have to go through the permitting process, but as long as you follow the guidelines, then you're welcome to trim. And usually contractors have to do that when they apply for a permit, for permitting to trim plants. So these are the two criteria specifically. So any trees that are under six feet in height, no more than one-third of the leaf mass of each plant may be removed in a single pruning event or in a single year. And then if the tree is over six feet or more, no more than one-third reduction in the height of each tree annually, provided that there's no more than one-third of the leaf mass removed annually. And then pruning should not result in plant being reduced to less than six feet in height. Sort of similar with mangroves where you, if they're at a certain height, you can only trim so much. So it's a sort of a similar types of guidelines. But as long as you're following these guidelines, you can receive the permit in order to prune sea grapes. So this is just a map showing where the Coastal Construction Control Line is. Anyone can go to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection website and search for Coastal Construction Control Line and look at the map to see where the line falls along our coasts. So this is just showing the line in Cape Canaveral. You can zoom in much more than I've zoomed in here, but this is just to highlight that anyone is able to go to the website and look up this information. So the very last thing I just wanted to say is there's a lot of benefits, not only to wildlife, but also to us, and that would be considered ecosystem services to humans for a lot of our coastal plant species. There are no specific research that has been done on sea grapes specifically that talks about economic benefits to having sea grapes in the, as far as protecting property behind the sea grape. Like I said before, they help to prevent erosion, they help to keep the dune in place that ultimately protects any property that's behind the sea grape. But there have been studies on mangroves, so we just wanted to include this just as an example of another plant, very similar to sea grapes, and that they help to prevent erosion, they help to shore up the shoreline, and they also help protect plants behind, or properties behind them. So this is specifically from research that was done, the second bullet in Florida related to Hurricane Irma. So this was done in Collier County, looking at reducing the flood risk and damage to any property behind mangroves by 25%. And that ultimately averted $1.5 billion in potential costs the properties might have had to pay by not having as much damage as they would have if the mangroves weren't there. So I just wanted to put this in, just to highlight that there is research out there that's kind of looking at these plant species and sort their benefits to properties, because we all want to protect our properties ultimately right from damage, so. And I think that's my last slide. Thank you again for having me today. I really do appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Holly, and the University of Florida and Brevard Extension for taking the time to inform us. It's a big part of our conversation and we've got throughout the year, areas within the city where, you know, those sea grapes will not only block salt and wind, but blocks views.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's where, as you're well aware, it becomes a bit controversial. I could say another thing, you might have said it, I missed it, is sea grapes, they're probably 20-foot, like Harrison Avenue is one I commute quite a bit. They also shade our crossovers where they're higher, because they're on the south side. And, you know, bare feet on that hot sand, you see some people running for refuge and sort of that, that's, you know, because the pavement's next, but very informative, very helpful. Counsel, any questions for Holly or? Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Willis?
Yeah. The application process with FDEP. Now, how does the city assist with that? How does that relate to the city?
I think it depends on the property that is looking to trim the sea grapes. So if it's private property, more than likely, they would go through a contractor to go through the permitting process. I am not sure if the city is ever, like, if the DEP reaches out to the city during that process, process if it is private property. But DEP, I know that their, their permitting department is always willing to have meetings or conversations with people about permitting in general or going after specific permits. I work with colleagues who go, who put in living shorelines, for instance. And so one of the recommendations that DEP always has is setting up a meeting, talking with us about what it is that you're thinking of doing, so they can kind of help guide. I would assume that if the city wanted to do that and just talk about their sea grapes within the city and what that looks like, they would be happy to do that and meet with you, so. And then maybe that would help. And then maybe that would help provide you guys with additional information, and maybe in the future, when other, when permits are going through, just being more aware of the process.
And Mr. Mayor, I know several months ago, we asked about properties being permitted to trim sea grapes and what, what the city was doing, and I believe Brianna Sote was going to be working on that, and I, as of yet, don't know where that has gone. So if we could have the interim city manager update us in the future on what the policies are on trimming sea grapes along the shoreline, I would, I would like to know.
And I did find out an interesting tidbit, because there were multiple condo complexes that the dunes in front of their complex are owned by the county. So they literally don't really, they're not the property owner. So that will make an interesting twist on permitting as we look at that. And thank you so much. We have had this conversation in our city for quite a while, so we appreciate all the information.
Yeah, of course. I need, I'm always happy to talk at any time, and I'm, thank you for having me here today. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that was fantastic. Now we are still in the presentations. We are on item number five C, recycling service day change request with Waste Pro. I believe we might have Mr. Dean Ulrich here with us here today. I see you coming forward. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. So I am, I'm here to request a day change. Currently, we service curbside recycling in the city. Half the city gets it on Tuesday, half the city on Friday. I would like to change those days combined, and the condominium complexes that have cart service for recycling, those are all done on Wednesdays. I would like to move all recycling to Wednesday, so take the Tuesday to Wednesday, take the Friday to Wednesday. Primary reason for that is to alleviate some pressure on us. Give me an additional truck and crew on that Tuesday and Friday. I can then use that crew, most of the time it's going to stay in the city and be operating trash, because we are currently, we run two trucks on Tuesday and Friday for trash. And I would like to do, like you said, most of the time, we would add that third truck to keep it here in the city. That will alleviate some of the pressures that we're experiencing currently. I'll give you a little bit of a background on, on some of our service pains right now. A lot of it is self-inflicted, but I think it's for a good thing. We have, over the past year, year and a half, have really enforced rules for the drivers and the helpers for their safety, I guess going on to our safety conversation a couple of presentations ago about traffic safety. So we are very strongly enforcing the rules of the helper can only be on the step if the truck is traveling 10 miles per hour or less, okay? 10 miles per hour is very slow and very difficult to maintain that speed, but our drivers have been doing a very good job of, of keeping that speed down. We, we actually rarely catch somebody. We monitor, we do follow-ongs, we do observations through our camera system, through our GPS system, and we rarely catch, I don't like saying it that way, but we do, we rarely catch our drivers exceeding the speed limits with the helper on the step. That's a good thing, all right, when we talk about safety. However, what it has done is, is slowed down our routes and made it more difficult to complete those routes within the given period of time where we operate. So, so I am looking and requesting to be able to change those days. I'll say this, I currently have eight routes that run on Tuesday and Friday. I only have four routes that run on Wednesday, so I have much more capacity on Wednesday, and that's why we'd like to move that recycling to Wednesday. It frees up a truck for us and a crew for us to operate trash on that, on that Tuesday and Friday without, I guess it's going to make it easier and it's actually going to offer you better service in the city, because we will have more assets available at the time, so. And, you know, I've discussed this with John, I've discussed it with June and, and Jessica and DPW on many occasions, and I believe everybody's in favor of that. What I have here are those with the, in, according to our contract, it just states I need approval from an authorized person. It doesn't say who that authorized person is, doesn't say what the title is, it just says authorized person. And so what I'm requesting, I guess, is to maybe get council approval, to give John approval, to give me approval, if that's the best way to go about it. That way, I can kind of go to some notifications that would take. I know there'd be, it's not going to be an easy process, but we can make it an easy process. I've actually done four route changes in other communities so far this year, and they have gone very well. And what we've done is put, we put out flyers, put out mailers to, to every resident that would, every household, I guess. It would not go to the condominium complexes, but would go to every household. In addition to that, on those particular days affected, whether it be the day directly before or two days directly before, depending on how this works out, we have then also put a flyer affixed to the cart for those people that had it out on the wrong day, on the, on the old day, right, the previous day. And we'll put out a reminder flyer as well. And so that has proven to be very effective. It doesn't get everybody, but I think we've done very well and very few complaints, very few phone calls that have come in about these other route changes, not quite as large as here, but I am very confident we can, we can get out plenty of advance notice and plenty of personal attention to make sure it goes smoothly. That's a very good goal of ours, to make sure it goes smoothly. So I think that covers my notes. I don't know if you have, I'm open to questions, though.
Thank you, Dean.
Sure.
And thank Waste Pro for all, all you do. And I want to put on the record, I know him by brother. Do you know Brother?
Antoine.
Antoine.
Yes.
One of the nicest, most uplifting people.
Yep.
That we hear him coming, and.
And the kids love him.
He changes people's days for the better.
Sure.
And just want to let you know how much I've heard positive feedback and directly experienced.
Sure.
Him and, and the entire team, but he's really special to this community, so thank you.
And we want to keep Antoine, as well as others, safe, and that's why we have slowed down our trucks when it comes to that. So I, years ago, I was the guy who was on the back of the truck going 40 miles down the road, right, waving to everybody and thinking, boy, this is great. And then now I'm looking back, I was like, boy, that was stupid, all right? And I'm on a five-lane highway on the back of a truck, and that does not make any sense. And so we have really stressed hard to put these, we actually call them our life preservation rules. It's a series of seven rules. The big one is the speed allowance with, when a helper is on the back step. And we're doing that just for, for safety. We're doing it not just here, but all of Waste Pro is really focusing on that.
Thank you. John, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, Dean, go, go forward with your, you know, your notification process. And on the, you could also go, if you want to notify Jessica Coco, and on the utility bill, I think they put on the bottom of the utility bill, they usually require, you know, 30 to 60-day notice, but in this case, this is not going to upset what you need to do, so go ahead and do your notices. Call Coco tomorrow, just send Jessica DeValier a message and what you're going to say on the bill as far as the, the service that you're changing.
Right.
And I think you'd be in good shape. If you need me for anything, just give me a call.
Okay. So we would look at, to get all the notifications, then we'd probably be looking at mid-April to make sure it happens properly, so. Excuse me, I have sample flyers, if you'd like to see them for what we've done for previous towns, so if that helps.
I think it would be helpful. I don't want to get too far ahead, John, maybe I misspoke, but just want to hear the council's thoughts on it first.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That sounds good. Counsel? Thank you.
So this is the move we made recently in Palm Shores, and we moved them from Tuesday. They were Tuesday, Friday for trash, and we recently moved them to Wednesday, Saturday, and does the same thing for us. It helped alleviate a truck which I was able to use as needed in another area that we service.
And these were mailed or handed out?
We did both. So we mailed them, and then on the effective route day, when it went into place that particular week, I had a separate driver that would follow around the route and just tape them to the carts, so they would have a second notice as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel, Councilmember Willis?
Dean, you're, you're assuring us that you can combine the two days into one and get everybody taken care of?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, like I said, we have, so we currently run on Tuesdays, right now, Tuesday, Friday, we run eight trucks, and we have, five of them are south, Malabar Grand Valkyrie, and actually, three of them are here. So we have two for trash and one for recycling. So we'd be taking that same truck, moving it for trash. On Wednesdays, we only run four routes, and so we do, and one of them is condominium recycling here. So I, I can take those trucks, I have multiple trucks available on Wednesday, so it actually is going to free things up much better for everybody around on that, but a much smoother route system throughout the week as opposed to a lot this day and not very many this day.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I see no difficulty with this, so.
Thank you.
Just to understand, the trash will still stay Tuesday, Friday?
Correct.
And the recycling will be Wednesday?
Yes, all recycling will be Wednesday. Yard waste will stay as Monday. Trash Tuesday, recycling Wednesday, nothing Thursday, trash Friday.
Okay. I don't see a problem with that either.
Thank you, Mayor Percham.
And I don't see a problem with it either, Mayor. It makes good business sense for him, which means he's going to be more effective, you know, making sure that everything is picked up, because all the recycling will be done on Wednesday, so as long as he's able to make those condos and.
Yes.
Our single-family homes and everything, then I don't see a problem.
Yeah, I think the big change from a resident standpoint is, like you said, Monday, we bring out yard waste. That's staying the same.
Right.
Tuesday, trash only. There's no recycle on my side. I think you said you do half.
So, so yes, we do half the, I don't remember which one, but yes, we do half the city on Tuesday for recycling, the other half goes on Friday.
And so, yeah, it's typically trash only Tuesday. Wednesday, we do nothing as of today, and then Thursday, this.
For most residents, nothing, but we do have a separate truck that goes around to all the condominium complexes.
Okay.
Where you're going to have anywhere from five to 20 carts for recycling. And so we pick up, you know, that's a day, that's a route right there.
I see.
So, so we will actually be running three trucks here on Wednesday for recycling. So two for the individual residents, and we'll continue our condominium truck.
Nothing's changing on Thursday, Friday, trash only in the weekends.
Right.
Sometimes there's Saturday morning when it's real heavy pickup.
And, and that's, that should be alleviated now, because we will be able to add, we'll have another truck available on the super-heavy days when it's out there. You know, we might not need it, like we talked about, May coming up, not as busy here. But certainly this time of year, it's, it's busy, all right? And so it's busy and it's crowded, so, so that is, it does slow us down, obviously, and, but that, by making that change, we will have an extra crew available that we can kind of spread the wealth out a little bit among three drivers as opposed to two.
Well, thank you very much. Any other final comments? I think John's already kind of talked about next steps, and city attorney, anything we should know on this as far as?
No, sorry. I was, I was, I was supposed to, but this, he's asking consent, so I need some sort of like unanimous.
Okay. Do we have consensus on the, the proposed change?
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, great. We have one more presentation, city staff introductions. Interim city manager.
Yes, I'd just like to introduce, we have a building official, deputy building official, Patrick Larrout, stand up please, and Isaac Lyon. I think the city is very fortunate for these two gentlemen, very experienced, and I think they're doing, going to do a heck of a job for the city, and I look forward to working with you, and I think the city is going to be well-covered with your experience and knowledge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome.
I, I want to thank you both and let you know that we, I really love that you do this, that you introduce new employees and take this time, actually wrote this down so I wouldn't babble, but I want to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation for our interim city manager and the dedicated staff, obviously, our new hires, building official, and the changes in that department and deputy building official. Your hard work, professionalism, and commitment to serving our community does not go unnoticed. Whether ensuring our city runs smoothly, managing key projects, or assisting residents with their needs, you all play a crucial role in making Cape Canaveral a better place. Leadership transitions can be challenging, but thanks to the dedication of our interim city manager and city staff, we continue to move forward with confidence and stability. So on behalf of myself, the city council, we want to thank you for your service, your passion, and your commitment to our community.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Excellent. Welcome to the city. Thank you. Okay, great. That concludes presentations, which brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. Got a few cards up here, tried to keep them in the order that they came in. Thank you very much. Couple more. And if, we're going to hear the folks here first for the cards, but at some point, this monitor here did lock out, so being able to sign back in, in the event, that you're listening from home, we will get to you in just a moment if any of you choose to speak. There is a webinar ID that you might need to plug in if you do intend to participate. That ID is 516-340-291. Again, that is 516-340-291. I think we're going to try to display that on the screen as well. And with that, we'll go ahead and move forward with the cards I have here. First one is Ms. Vicky Mace. Hey, Vicky.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Mace. I currently reside in Merritt Island, but I am, I am a partial owner of a condo on Cape Canaveral. At the conclusion of the city meeting, Cape Canaveral meeting on February 18th, Councilmember Davis suffered a stroke within a few minutes of gaveling the end of the meeting. She was taken by ambulance helicopter to Holmes Regional Medical Center where emergency surgery was performed. This medical emergency took place shortly after pulling the agenda item, public records discussion. Please understand, this was not a discussion, but perceived by many as a personal and tenacious attack on Councilmember Davis by both the mayor and Councilmember Jackson. Mayor Morrison, as the mayor, you are ultimately responsible to lead in an efficient and ethical manner when guiding council to make critical decisions for the city. As a leader, you set the tone for these public meetings. Perhaps more importantly, you are responsible for creating a positive culture to ensure the members work productively and collaboratively to perform its legal responsibilities at the highest level. With this in mind, I address my next comments to you, Mayor Morrison. I implore you that you watch the videos of the meetings in which you governed, especially the last couple of years, and I ask that you do a true reflection, that you ask yourself, have I always led with integrity, being consistent, honest, moral, and trustworthy? Have I always demonstrated civility and respect for all members of the council, city staff, and constituents? Have I always demonstrated empathy, the ability to understand another person's position and how they are feeling in order to find common ground when discussing public matters? Have I always demonstrated decorum? Have I always been an active listener? Have I always demonstrated diplomacy? Have I always utilized specific de-escalation techniques and conflict management skills to help navigate through contentious meetings? Have I always valued and embraced collaboration? Please note that these are just a few research vital qualities to look for in a local leader and do in reflection, is what some good leaders always do. I can't imagine that I'm the only person to is what some good leaders always do. I can't imagine that I'm the only person in this room that's grown weary of the division, the lack of moral fortitude, the hateful rhetoric, and the win-at-whatever-cost mentality that we are witnessing at the country level, the state level, and right here in this room in Cape Canaveral, Florida. Character matters, integrity matters. And as constituents, we must expect more of our elected officials. We must demand that they govern in a way that is civil, transparent, respectful, and represents the values, beliefs, and priorities of the community, not just a few members or a few demands made by a few. Words and actions can have serious consequences, as evidenced by what happened to Councilmember Davis at the February 18, 2025 meeting. I hope through true reflection, the council will determine that changes are desperately needed for this organization, particularly if you want to be perceived as a viable entity serving this community with the utmost dignity and respect it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is Mr. John Bond. Did John step out? Or is he, well, we can come back to it. If he returns. Brad Pervell is the next card. Brad, I got two for you. I saw you added one. Do you want to do those together?
Sure, as long as they're over at a time.
Hey, Brad. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad Pervell. I'm a citizen of Cape Canaveral, Florida. First and foremost, I want everyone to understand, I am talking as a citizen only today for the city of Cape Canaveral. Many people know why I said that. First card, I'd like to talk about the safety of A1A. One thing I think we all missed is, why are we not talking about doing bus bumpouts to keep the traffic on A1A flowing? That's common sense, so it doesn't hinder traffic. The other issue is, we need to align our bus stops on the southbound side and the northbound side. Since we're going to be spending, or the state, I hope that lady's still here. There she is. It just makes common sense to align the bus stops and to put bus bumpouts, whatever that turnouts, I guess is the term, so traffic can continue to flow. That's all I have to say about that. The next topic, and typically, I like to freelance, but I'm going to read this, please. "Good evening. First, I'd like to thank our elected city officials for keeping our taxes as low as possible without an increase in the past inflationary years." Thank you very much for that. "As many of you know, I'm a huge softball and baseball supporter. As a matter of fact, this year, I'm volunteering over 30 hours of time to the Space Coast Little League. I'm here to discuss the almost a half a million dollar proposal to build a concession stand for our single one baseball field in the city. Almost a half a million dollars to be spent on a facility that is used between 30 and 27 times a year. We cannot cook in this facility for fire reasons. We must build an apron using cement or pavers to put the grills there to cook product. This is similar to Port St. John's sports complex. This is similar to the Cocoa Beach Sports Complex. The difference is, Cocoa Beach has three-plus fields. Port St. John has almost seven-plus fields. How much revenue will this concession stand generate for the Little League? That's anyone's guess. More importantly, what's the ROI for the city on this almost half a million dollar adventure? Is the concession stand nice to have? It sure is. No doubt about it. Is it necessary for one field? Not at all. Please do not consider that it could be rented during the year. Look at the success rate of how our city has rented other pavilions. A viable alternative would be for the Space Coast-"
But I know you filled out a couple cards, Counsel. We're okay with extending. Please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. A viable alternative would be for the Space Coast Little League to contract a food truck. There's parking for it. Have the food truck donate $75 to $100 per day to the Space Coast Little League. It's a tax write-off. Have the contract include a 90% attendance performance attendance, not including inclement weather. In turn, the city should be able to offer that food truck contractor 10 spots at the Friday Fest, including inclement weather. The Space Coast Little League for this can earn close to $3,000 with doing virtually nothing. Now, of this half a million dollars, plus or minus that's earmarked to this concession stand, I suggest we use 20 to 30 of that to update the press box, to add batting cages to our field, and perhaps updating the scoreboard if there's money left over. The remaining funds, I suggest they go to the space between. Not the space between sunset and sunrise, but the space between City Hall and the Nancy Hansen Building, where we have a million-dollar parking lot. There's no update in the last 10 months on the website regarding the Civic Hub, the reason we spent a million dollars to tear down a building, million dollars plus. I believe this is a sensible choice for a sensible community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brad. Mr. John Benton?
Okay, you know why I'm here. A code reduction hearing. Anybody going to give me one? Or this is going to continue for another 10 years? You won't give me one is because I was coming out on a Jew school in that warehouse. Judge Rainwater can verify that, and the FBI can verify it. You called the FBI. When the FBI was recording, Mr. Randalls and I in the court, in the hallway over there at the library, Randall started to talk to me. And I told him, I said, "Don't even talk to me. We want to settle, John. We want to settle. Why don't you give me a code reduction hearing?" And that code enforcement hearing I went to, the guy that followed me, I just saw it in the minutes. He was a repeated violator. I've never even been had a problem. And my renter in the next unit to me was a cop. Make sure we know that. He was there 160 hours the month before you guys laughed and mocked me and referred to me as a cookie that crumbled. Never been homeless in my life. It was a Jew school I was going to, coming out on. And Mr. Randalls must have found out, somebody at the courthouse, maybe Judge Rainwater, or somebody in her office, told her, "Hey, this guy's coming out on a Jew school again." I did it in 93. And psychologist said, "John, you need to go and tell someone about these other people." And that's what I was doing. I would go to my warehouse. I don't want to talk about stuff like that at my house. Write it down. I'd go to the warehouse and do it. Shut that door and keep the paperwork there. So, that the owners over there, the board members, don't have a pass key and come in and read this. They don't, you want to read about two-year-old children getting raped by teachers? I brought all, I brought pictures in, all the homeless people up there. And they were there the night that they found me guilty. Kevin Mann, the deacon up there at the Presbyterian Church, came in there and lied to you guys, every one of you. And now, I find out that he's a deacon up there, and his wife is up there at the Seafarers Ministry. And his son was arrested for using the warehouses living up there. At the same time, you found me guilty. Why didn't you find him guilty? My driver's license, electric bill, phone bill, and homestead exemption, two of those are state-issued. The cops in the meeting after mine said that there was people living in the house over here on Polk Avenue. The cop that came to me at my warehouse a half a dozen times, he knew the cop was in the unit next to me because I told him. He didn't tell anybody because I begged him not to. So, that none of those homeless people up there would go over there and bother him when he worked on his car. Randalls begged me in front of that FBI, "Please, John, we want to settle. You guys have kicked it down. This lawyer over here, he's Jew. Mayor is Jew."
Please, please, hey, hey, hey.
"Hey, I'm not racist."
You're not going to become Boyce, Chris, and Y'all. Please, keep your volume down.
Okay, I'll keep, okay, I'll keep my volume down. It's down.
Listen, listen, listen. Address me, okay? Don't be pointing fingers to other people up here and calling out.
I can.
Address the chair, please.
I certainly can. Because I just had that problem down in Arizona, and the charges were dropped. You've never told him he can't stand up and defend himself.
Thank you, John.
Joe Abreu, Long Point Road. Most of you know me. I am very happy to see that in the Capitol Projects, something is trying to be done down there at the end of Long Point Road. Last week and a half, there has been surveyors there pretty much every day. When all that really needed was the retention pond to be fixed. It wasn't fixed after they started doing the remediation of the pepper plants. That was done by, I don't know, St. John's Water District Management to some contractor. Being down there is like playing a game with a pea under three cups, because you don't know who you're supposed to talk to. I am happy to see that they're trying to do something. I believe you could have saved a lot of money if the city is even paying for what's going on there now. I think it's being done by someone else. They're going to give the city some free money, because we did that one other time. We're going to do it because it's free money. And we're still in the same boat. I was in here the other day, or two weeks ago, three weeks ago. It just continues to go and go and go. Now, whatever's going to be done down there, I have a feeling what's going to be done. I want to make sure that somebody's looking at what the ripple effect's going to be of whatever they do. Because just like this gentleman said from the Space Coast Little League, going to spend half a million dollars on a concession stand? Doesn't make any sense at all. The last time we went through this on Long Point Road, we didn't know anything about the $33,000 the city was going to have to put up to get a permit. I never saw that anywhere in any of the meetings, any of the updates, none. But all of a sudden, we had to pay $33,000 to get a permit from, I'm not even sure who it was from anymore. Again, it's like three or four different cups with a pea underneath it. All I ask is that as we go through this, hopefully, we'll have a workshop before anything really gets done. I would love to attend it. I want to see what's going to happen. Thank you. And thank you all for your support in doing what you people do. Don, thank you for getting A1A started on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Jody Berger? Now, I see this is selected for item 5B, which you're more than welcome to come up and speak now, Jody. Just double-check. Is it?
The secrets.
The secrets. Oh, please, come forward. Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Jody Berger. I live at Sierra Sands, right around the corner from Buick Manor. I want to thank Councilmember Willis. We've been in contact with him many times. For the last four or five years, I've been contacting the city, the Sheriff's Department about things. Although I know you love the height of our sea grapes going over the Harrison crossover, I have a little different perspective because I go by every day. And there's homeless people in and out. People are using drugs. They're defecating. It's a scary place, especially if you're at night and you want all the lights down because of those sea turtles. And you have to go over there, and people are living in the sea grapes because they're so massive. Children coming off the beach, and there's people coming out. I even ran into a lady of the evening coming out of there with somebody else once. It's very scary for the residents. And I've been contacting the city and the Sheriff's Department many times about this. So, I did find out. I talked to Melissa Kane, no, sorry, Melanie Kane. She is from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. She is our, in this area, environmental specialist. And she does issue the permits. We, as in Sierra Sands, cannot get a permit for that corner. We maintain our area, and we're allowed to do that. When she came down, apparently, there was another condo that had an issue cutting too low on city stuff. She came down, and she actually looked at that area and walked through the Harrison and agreed that it was in pretty bad shape. So, I emailed her, and I talked to her. And she said that we could, if the city applied for a hard-cut permit, that the city would have to do it. That she would issue a hard-cut permit if, under these conditions, the city of Cape Canaveral applied for the permit, since it's on city land. All cutting was done on weekdays only, no weekends. A representative from the city was present to oversee the cutting to ensure it never went below six feet. The cutting was done at a time, say like November, that was not during turtle season. And if there were any pepper trees in there, they would be promptly cut and treated. And one thing she noted was that what we have in that area specifically is a canopy effect, that it's gotten so big that the light is not getting to the roots. And it's the roots that help save our dune. So, we need the cuts in order for it to spread. And right now, it's so high that it's not as pertaining of our dune. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I want to clarify, I wholeheartedly agree with the health of pruning. And I'm not an expert in that. But I know pruning is good for the points. Stab, it puts that energy back in the roots thicker. I like the height, but they are very high.
Yeah.
And I think there's a balance. So, thank you for bringing that forward and explaining that process.
Well, she said that we could hire, they would allow Sierra Sands to do the work if the city did the permitting and followed those guidelines.
Thank you. I hope we can do something with this as soon as possible.
I think I forwarded you the email. If I didn't, I can send it again.
I don't recall receiving it.
It's been a while, but I can send it again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, yeah, I think the last time I did this for Fillmore Avenue, one of the things that I'd heard in that, it was having a city representative present during the whole time. I don't think we did that last time. I think that's good suggestion during the weekday and that other criteria. So, when that email comes, if that's something that the city can pursue, and, you know, obviously, learn the process, I think it would be, it would be good.
Yeah, I would like to see something formal process, something that we're not having to make residents go and research it for us, that we go ahead and have, I mean, Ms. Berger's email will probably give us enough information to formulate a process, if you will, and so that we can get these things done and not have to make people come talk to us about it. We, they just go and get the permit and go through the process and get it done.
And we'd also discussed the city maintaining the city's right-ofways at all of the boardwalks. So, that's something we need, we need some follow-up on because that process is going to help assist in that. Because even in a condo complex, when you go down far enough, they still have those at the boardwalk. they still have those at the boardwalk that's in our right-ofway, our easement.
Any comments, Mayor Portem?
No, I'll be discussing this at my 10:30 meeting tomorrow with my staff.
And when we get into the budget, ongoing budget for, if it impacts us, thank you very much. I think that's something we're all open to. Thank you. Thank you again, Jody. Michael Corrigan?
Thank you for your time. I'm here representing the Bermuda House. I'm the president of the association. I'm here to see what it would take to get our trash emptied. The trash bin, the dumpster, has been full since last week. I came down to City Hall yesterday to get a phone number or see what it would take. I was given a phone number, I called the trash company. They said that they come every Wednes- Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. There was nobody there on, on Friday, there was nobody there on, on Monday, and they assured me that they would be there today to empty it. It is still full. Over the weekend, the trash dumpsters in our neighborhood were overflowing with garbage. I'm glad the gentleman here is here tonight to hear this, that the service is not being provided, at least not for the, not for the trash bins, the dumpsters.
What is your address again, Michael? That you mentioned that place where you live, where the dumpster's located?
It's in our parking lot there. There's only 10 units at the Bermuda House.
Bermuda House?
Bermuda House, and it's on Circle Drive.
Thank you.
And, but it, it, it's easily accessible. I do want to compliment the employees of the trash company. I've met them, they're great people, they do a good job, they're friendly. I've got no heartburn with any of them, but I do have heartburn, and our residents are having heartburn with the lack of the, the, they either come three times a week, which we really don't need. Twice a week is sufficient, but it's gotta be at least once a week. And the neighborhood looks like hell over the weekend with all the trash. So it, if something could be done and that could be addressed, we don't have any problem with recycling, it gets picked up sufficiently. But with the trash, that, that seems to be a problem.
Thank you.
The, the second item I would like to bring up is, I try to spend as much time at the beach as I can, and it's been pretty nice down there. People ride their bicycles and they, they fish and they do a lot of things. Over the weekend, we, I noticed several young teenagers driving their e-bikes at about, I don't know, I estimated 30 miles an hour down the beach, with little children playing in the sand, in the ocean. And I think it's getting to be a little bit hazardous. I would hate to see one of the children run over. But at the speed they were going, if they'd have hit somebody, if they hit a child, they would have killed it. So I, I hate, I don't want to see bicycles removed. I have one of our tenants' owners, he takes his bicycle with his trailer and goes down and goes fishing.
That was on the beach, Michael, the e-bikes?
Yeah, yeah. Straight out from here.
Thank you.
Straight out from here. So it's, it should be, and it's only, it's only a couple of people, but it's always, that's the case. It's not on my list, but I'd like to make one more comment about the sidewalks here, or crosswalks. I moved here 12 years ago. One of the things I was appalled with was the lack of conformity of the crosswalks. The crosswalks are not being designed to where the person driving the car can see them. They have signs to the side. I don't know how you drive, I don't use peripheral vision to read all the signs going down the street. There's so many of them. That's like me getting on my cellphone, trying to read, and my, my emails. I look ahead of me, but the sidewalks here on our street, you, you put the bike lane in with the new green paint. That really stands out, you can see that. But there, A-1A has gotten so bad, I went, drove down, I usually go, use it to go to Melbourne. I'm not going to use it anymore, I used it on, on Friday. I'm now going to, over to Highway 1. The, the speed bumps they've got there are unmarked. And the, the signs for the sidewalks are between the car and the person using the sidewalk. It's not on the other side of the sidewalk. So there needs to be some consistency. I don't know if the, the Department of Transportation here has ever done a study on the safety and what is visible to the driver, because they're not visible.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Angela Raymond? That's the last card I have received, so if you, just wanted to make sure I didn't overlook you.
Good evening, I'll be brief, as, as usual. Since the new council has been seated, I think that we have reached a new height of ugliness in the city. We have witnessed some outrageous behavior, in my opinion, and I think other people agree with me in the city. We have seen disrespect for our staff, disrespect for our residents, disrespect for each other. This is very sad. We're a small town, these are our neighbors. We see our neighbors in church, we see our neighbors in the store, we see our neighbors at the grocery store, at the mall. And we live, we live, we're living together. So this is part of life, to respect, be courteous to one another. I think that we have to recall that city council, when city council meets, it's a business meeting. It's a business meeting. I don't want to use the word diversity, because I heard that has a nugget of connotation today. However, diversity of an opinion is a positive thing for all of us. We, this is the way that we learn, we learn from each other, we should listen to each other. It is so sad what happened the last time that I witnessed. Oh, yes, I wasn't here physically, I was listening on the phone, I heard it all. I think that we can do better. So I just want to encourage the council, please, let's have a business meeting. You won't have people walking out. We don't need to have 50 questions and go on and on and on. And also, I'd like to say thank you to Vicki Mace for, and I would like to reiterate many of the things that she had to say tonight. I thought that she said it very, very well. And I, it's too bad that John Bond left, because I think he had things to say too. And I think that we just all need to be conscientious, we are neighbors, we have a small town. We need to respect each other, be courteous, and try, try to live it. Try, all of us need to try to live this. Thank you.
That concludes the cards that I have. I'm not able to see the screen here, if anyone is listening online and that it, that functionality is working, and you have the opportunity to put in the code. I'll read it one more time. Again, that's 516-340-291. Mr. Dela, how do I get logged into this screen, or do we have the capability? I think somebody back there-
The mic's coming.
Should be able to control it from back there, I thought.
Our screens are locked with the code, Mike.
I just can't get into the basic desktop and see anything, it locks out. Yeah. If I could get a password or create a whole new user- Oh, that's the-
This is the password.
Thank you very much, that's excellent. I thought you said the webinar code, I'm very sorry, thank you. Thanks again, Mike. Okay, I can see the attendee list looks to be zero at this time. So I don't think anyone was able to get on, or just not on tonight. And with that, we will go ahead. Anyone who intended to speak did not get to speak, Mr. Abreu, yes, sir?
I already spoke, and I have one other comment that I may-
Yes, if you'd just please come forward. And if you are listening online as Mr. Abreu's coming up and you have the opportunity to put in a code to go to meeting, it is 516-340-291. Mr. Abreu?
Thank you. Again, the gentleman from Space Coast Little League made a comment about keeping our taxes low, which the council has done, and I think you've done a great job at it. What I do want to know is how come our water bills are so high? Is that where our taxes are being able to be lowered? There's one on there, and I don't know if the city manager, interim city manager, can answer it or not. It's the very last line item on my bill, and it's something about a water conduit tax or something? It's only a buck eighty-five. Do you have any idea what that's about?
Yeah, I think we can find out if not, but-
Well, if, if you look at your, at the bill-
Yeah, the line items on the cocoa water bill, reclaim water fee, the stormwater fee, wastewater-
Everything is City of Cape Canaveral.
Yeah, yes, well over 50%, yeah.
Yes. So maybe we could get that to go down a little bit.
You know, send, send me a message, okay? And I, I will respond directly to you, looking at that bill, and I'll even explain the whole bill to you if you need me to.
I pretty much understand the bill, it's just I'd never noticed that one that was a tax.
Yeah, there, now, there is a 10% water, on the consumption of water, that's what it is. And that, that could be, yeah, that's-
That's been charged for years, ever since, I've been here 12 years, and that was instituted probably 10 years ago. It, the state does allow us to charge 10%. Each city can charge 10%, most cities have it too. So whatever, whatever your water is, 10% of it or what have you, it's like, for you, it's a dollar eighty-five or whatever it is. Yeah. It's a way, it's actually a way for cities to get more revenue.
Oh, bingo, thank you.
And there you go, yeah.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
And that allowed us a little bit of time to give the opportunity. I still don't see anyone on, and so with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Public participation, bring it back to the council. We're at 7:44 PM. I'd like to take a, at least five, 10-minute recess here. We'll reconvene here, let's try to get back 7:55, no later than. If we're back here sooner, we can start as soon as we're ready. Thank you.
Oh, that one, that's a throwaway.
Um, I'm saying, like, are we gonna fire this in a moment?
Does that one look okay? First of all, gravy, like, just-
Is there a way?
It could be something, it might be a word.
All right, we'll have to come down.
What we could do is, maybe change out the-
Is that what I did? I tapped it?
No, I don't know, I don't know what it is.
Does it work, so it's just, I leave it, I, thank you. SFI that, right? This, is there a way that we could, everything you, change it without, you know? That's why I was, I wanted to get yours in there. Yeah. So I know that it needs to be signed. Um, just to changes, so that I can make notes when it was advertised. My handwriting is horrible, and, yeah. If you don't mind. That's why I was, I asked Starve to reach out and, Rihanna, no, she left by that time, after I asked. And that's why I went to that phone conversation as well, so. Okay. Hmm, yeah, it's in the backup, it's in the agenda, you want me to pull it? I can-
I'm here. If I, if I can, I'll do it.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I won't be able to sign that.
Um, you're fine, you can change this part and sign it. But it's this.
This'll make the change, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to sign that, but I'll, if I sign now, you gotta put that-
Yeah, yeah, like, it's my handwriting, I, I type my- Sorry?
You're gonna put it there?
Yeah, I was gonna do that, not this, you want to. I sing, and when it was first read, I called the research, that's how it began. Okay, because you know what, when we do a search and when I put it in the research, it's that, yeah. All right, thank you.
Are we ready to go?
Okay, it is eight o'clock PM. We call the regular council meeting back to order. Just had a recess, about fifteen minutes, and we are at agenda item number seven. We just completed public participation. Agenda item seven is the consent agenda with three items, A, B, and C. We can approve all three or pull one if needed. I would, I would, I'll go first and just say I would like to pull item... Seven, A, one, or I, the January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five special meeting. That was the only one out of those. Council, there's the remaining February eighteenth minutes, the interim city manager employment agreement, and the executive recruitment services firm contract. Are there any other items you'd like to pull?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, A, number two, B, and C.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pertim Kellum and a second by Councilmember Willis. Any further discussion? City clerk, is that clear, the motion? Okay, please call the roll.
Four. Four.
Four.
Four.
Okay. Great, just give me a second here. I'm gonna go to... Seven, A, I. The actual item, the minutes, the one we pulled. Okay, so the January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five special minutes. This section where it goes through public comment, um... Public participation, it summarizes them, I believe that's on page three of ten of the minutes. Yeah, just got here. Well, no.
Three of ten or...
Where it goes through the, well...
Two of five.
Is it two of five, or it goes through everyone who spoke?
Yes. Page two of five.
Oh, I'm on the, okay, I was on the wrong set there, sorry about that. The first, so in the middle of page two of five, as Mayor Perdim said, "Thank you." "The individuals below appeared before the city council citing reasons in support of the existing city manager agreement." It goes through and, and names those individuals, and the last individual mentioned, it says property and business owner, John Bond, also referred to his January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five letter to the city council, a copy of which is filed with the supplemental papers to the minutes of this meeting. I did not see that. Was that, did I just overlook it?
I didn't see it either.
Now, but then I started thinking typically when we approve minutes, if somebody brings a document, I don't know if I've ever recalled us approving, so I'm not saying it's wrong or inappropriate. I'm just thinking, we don't, you know, if people bring documents forward, we don't usually review those documents with the minutes, but it, I just want to make sure. It, it's usually saved in the minutes folder historically. You can go back and see. Maybe you can help explain. First question is, how would somebody be able to access that letter? I have a, I think we all have physical copies.
Yes.
And...
And that was a subject of debate in the end. And whenever documents are presented before the board and it's interest, I sometimes get public records requests for it, and that's the only way that one can identify that it was submitted in that forum. So, I mean, I'm not saying that it's good or bad. I don't know what the attorney thinks about that, but that's what I've been typically doing for many years for larger agencies. So I don't know what your protocol is, but that's the only way I could identify where that record was created and existed, and it was filed with the supplemental papers.
Thank you. In my history, you could go to the Laserfish twenty-twenty-five or city, I'll go to the click, city council, you know, minutes, twenty-twenty-five, and then it would, you know, the nomenclature of the, the date of the meeting, and then maybe if there's more than just one minute, there'd be another folder. You click on that, it would have the minutes that we're gonna approve tonight, and then you could see any additional materials or documents that were circulated. But it, you know, I'm not, it was, it was not anything we approved, it happened. City attorney, if that's what's, I just want to make sure it's accessible and...
Yep. You have the minutes in front of you. Did you say the minutes reflect that that letter is attached to the minutes?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, typically, you know, there's a lot of documents that, you know, the members of the public will submit as part of a meeting, and I think the clerk, there's different ways to handle it, but just these random documents that get submitted, you know, my opinion, best practice is not to include them in the minutes unless the council directs that they be included in the minutes. Otherwise, you're going to bog down your minutes with all this extraneous documentation, right? So it bogs down the minutes. With that said, there's usually a, a meeting, a meeting folder. So when documents are presented, you know, they're collected as part of the meeting and part of the, part of the record, so to speak, but the official minutes that get approved, the summary of the meeting, ordinarily miscellaneous documents submitted by the public don't get included unless the council directs that they be included in the minutes.
Okay.
Is that, is that...
Yeah, it says...
Furthermore, there, just so you know, I mean, there are different retention requirements for, you know, meeting documents versus the minutes. The minutes, as you know, are, are kept in perpetuity. You know, meeting documents per, per se have different retention schedules.
So where it says, "which is filed with the supplemental papers to the minutes of this meeting..."
Could I add to that?
Absolutely.
Sorry, the supplemental papers have a life cycle of, I think, five fiscal years. So it's not necessarily attached to the minutes, per se.
Okay.
So I don't know how you wish me to address that because it was mentioned in the meeting and it was discussed and...
What, the, the document? Well, certainly the, the minutes can reflect that there was a document, but I'm... Well, certainly, the, the minutes can reflect that there was a document, but I'm, I'm just talking about whether they should be attached to the minutes. What you're saying, I think you and I are saying the same thing, this supplemental record is what I call as, you know, the file folder for the meeting.
Yes.
For all the collection of documents that is submitted.
That's fine.
And then they're just preserved and then subject to a different records retention than the official minutes, which are in perpetuity. And I, and what we do with those-
We dispose them.
Supplemental, I mean, I think you maintain them for a period of time, and they have no administrative value, then they're, then they're destroyed.
Disposed.
Disposed of.
Right. Once it's met its retention requirements, right.
So we'll be able to go and access that, that letter, though?
Yes, until-
Without a formal records request?
Yes.
I would, I would prefer that.
Okay.
I would wanna be able to, I mean, I have it, and the second thing that if, I don't think it's necessarily that they need to be included here.
Well, if we, if we start including one thing, next, next month's is going to be this big, so we don't want that.
And it's out of the scope of what we're doing, we're-
Right.
We're approving the minutes, no one can deny that letter, I mean, that's the letter. What is important, though, from time to time, is to capture what was stated during the public comment, and here it sort of summarized, you know, supporting, which I thought very efficient and helpful, that particular individual made some public comments and statements that was not, that the letter was different, it, it states that he referenced the letter, but I would like to, to see, and this is the reason I pulled it, can we ask that the minutes show, I mean, ideally, a verbatim of what that individual said into the record at that meeting, and then this council have the opportunity to approve it?
I mean, it's the council's minutes.
Yes.
I mean, to the extent that you want a verbatim of something that was said at the meeting incorporated into the minutes, I mean, that's your, that's your prerogative.
I, I don't want that to be lost today, the video is, is how we can do it, if that's something the council would be willing to do, I think it's important that we, we capture those public comments.
That's the council's prerogative, what the attorney said, so if this motion passes, then I would reference the minutes as amended, and then amend these actual minutes to include the verbatim as what you requested.
Or, or alternatively, you can just not approve the minutes tonight for that meeting, direct the clerk to put the verbatim in, and then present them to you at your next meeting. If you want, if you, if you wanna see the-
Whatever it is your desire.
It's, you know, it depends on how you wanna handle it.
And I have one other thing with it as well, if you don't mind.
Oh, yes, take it.
In that same section, at the beginning, it identifies Day, which was Lisa Day, and it, the other person, it has Ms. Yacken, city resident, property owner, and city employee, so we didn't identify the first name or anything about Day, so I think that should be corrected as well, so that it's correct.
Where's that?
Right at the top of that first paragraph.
Start of the paragraph.
Oh, yeah, good catch. Okay, well-
I, I just thought for consistency, we probably should do that, since we did this with the other, the other city staff member.
Good, yeah, I think-
So we just need to add Lisa.
Lisa and city employee.
Is that how you formally write Mrs.?
Yes, that's plural.
Oh, that is, okay.
Yes, it's like Mrs.
Cause I see-
Sorry.
No, no, I, I love learning, that's great, so anything else, Councilmember Jackson, that's a good catch?
I didn't see anything else.
Well, we'll, and we'll have them before us, but ideally, I mean, she can, our city clerk can make those changes and, and bring them back. Councilmember Willis?
Are, are we now going to be holding up our minutes in the future to add verbatim to any one individual? Is that what we're doing?
If a majority of the council desires that a public comment be captured for the record, I think that the majority of the council can do that, if I understand our city attorney. I don't think it's necessary, those specific comments made strong allegations, and also there was a letter that, that accompanied it, that I, I would like for that to not to be captured. I think it could be on a case-by-case basis, if you felt the need, or-
But, that's, that's fine, I, I just wanted to be sure the grounds we were going to work under now, so, that's it, that's all, no problem.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea across the board, but unless the council decided, and I'm certainly not suggesting that, just glancing down, I do see one, it's a tough last name, but in the last, in that, on that same page, Lee Visidomini, and it might have been-
Yeah, I was gonna say-
I can email, or one of us can email, Visidomini. D O M, so just that spelling of the last name, which I'm not gonna attempt to spell without looking myself.
V I C I D O M I N I.
And that was it? M as in manatee after the O?
Yes.
Okay. Visidomini. Got it, yep. Okay, so we'll, I guess, bring this back to the next meeting, if that's okay with you, city clerk?
That's fine, thank you, so it's postponed to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else?
Do we need a motion, or is this a consensus? Please.
They, they removed it, right?
Yes.
So just consensus to bring it-
Thank you.
Bring it back.
Do we have consensus to bring it back at the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great, that concludes, if, anything else on that? Good deal, thank you all very much. That takes us to item number eight, item for action. Item number eight, A, Resolution 2025-05, Space Coast TPO interlocal agreement, and a motion to consider the adoption of Resolution 2025-05, the title of which is follows. City Attorney, do you need to read this one?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. Okay. This item, interim city manager, is there anything you need to state on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, had a resolution approving an interlocal agreement for the formation of a metropolitan planning organization, NPO, by and between the Florida Department of Transportation, the County of Brevard, also representing Valkyria Airport, the Titusville-Cocoa Airport Authority, and the Space Coast Area Transit, the Canaveral Port District, also known as the Canaveral Port Authority, the City of Titusville, and it goes on to, I believe, name all the cities. I'll, I'll finish, City of Cocoa, Rockledge, Melbourne, Melbourne Airport Authority, also known as the Melbourne-Orlando International Airport, the City of West Melbourne, City of Palm Bay, the North Beaches Coalition, City of Cocoa Beach, and Cape Canaveral, and the South Beaches Coalition, which includes the City of Satellite Beach, the City of Indian Harbor Beach, Town of Indy Atlantic, and the Town of Melbourne Beach, collectively known as the Parties, or as the TPO. And with that, this is a one-time reading, I believe?
Yep. You got it.
Thank you. Counsel? Any comments?
I'd consider it a standard thing, we've done this once before, or it's just time to do it again, and I think we've already seen the benefit of being there, so I would like to see it passed.
And of course, I have questions.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Because I'm new at this, I haven't seen it yet. Okay, on page four of thirty-three, in the interlocal agreement for creation of metropolitan planning organization under section two dot oh dot three, it talks about chapter three thirty-four, Florida statutes grants broad authority for the department's role in transportation. It'll be responsible for coordinating and planning viable state, you know, which makes sense, because it's F dot, and they're putting the money out, they're doing all of that, but when you go over to section three, dot oh five, under rights of review, "all parties to this interlocal agreement and the effective federal funding agencies shall have the rights of technical review and comment on the TPO projects." And since we're a party, does this mean we have a right to review but no right to approve the projects?
Which, as part of the governing board, you have a right to review.
Okay.
So, me sitting on the governing board, I can review anything that comes through, and I have one vote within the governing board, and that's, you're, you're voting for or against something that Melbourne is applying for, or Cocoa Beach, or Cocoa.
Okay.
It's
Well-
It is, it is fourteen vote, fourteen or sixteen votes.
And, and I saw that in the breakdown, and let, and Don, you're probably the one I need, or Councilmember Willis, I'm sorry, you're the one I need to ask this of. So like with the roundabout, they gave us the opportunity to give feedback and make a choice on that. Does this affect that in any way?
No, no, it doesn't restrict that, I mean, FDOT was coming directly to the city and to the residents of the city to get their input. The TPO, of course, that input happened before I was on city council, and before I was on the TPO, but the TPO did not weigh in on that.
Okay.
They, they did observe and note that we voted it down as a council, and that the predominant feeling of the residents was that they didn't want it.
Okay.
So it didn't preclude us from acting on our own best interests, just as trying to get the pedestrian hybrid beacon, the only, the only reason that the TPO is going to have the formal vote is because we're using their money.
Okay.
FDOT was funding the roundabout, it was not a TPO fund.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for clarifying that for me. That's what I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments, counsel? Councilmember Jackson, anything else?
No, I'm just wanting to make sure we're not giving away, away any of our ability to homeroom, and when you start seeing interlocal governmental agreements, you have to, you know, make sure that there's no gotchas. City Attorney, have you seen any that might impact that?
Not, not for this particular interlocal agreement. Again, this is for cooperative decision-making among many agencies, it's a federal requirement for federal funding, and a whole host of other state requirements regarding transportation projects and coordination-
Okay.
-in the specific geographic area, which is what all these parties belong to.
Exactly, okay, thank you, no, I have no more questions.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution Number 2025-05.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Per Tim Kellum and a second by Councilmember Willis, to adopt Resolution 2025-05. Yeah, I, I support it, I think it comes down to paying attention, you know, and having, right now, Councilmember Willis on there, and all of us, and communicating, working with our city staff and attorney if anything's coming that's not in the interest of us, our city. We have a resolution, which really was the instrument that, I mean, it's not anything binding, F dot doesn't have to adhere to it, but they've certainly, I think, taken it seriously, and hopefully we can see the changes.
They appreciated, I mean, they actually appreciated the unanimous decision that all of those resolutions were, so.
Well, thank you. Anything else? City Clerk?
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Per Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis?
Four.
It's unanimous.
Unanimous for a vote to adopt Resolution 2025-05 is complete. Now we move on to item for action eight B, which is a public hearing item, this is a second reading for ordinance 2025-01, first one of the year, comprehensive plan coastal management and future land use element, perils of flood. Mr. City Attorney?
Okay, ordinance zero one dash twenty twenty-five, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending the City of Cape Canaveral comprehensive plan coastal management and future land use elements to address perils of flood in accordance with the requirements of one sixty-three point three one seven eight, subparagraph two, Florida statutes and other applicable law providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date and legal status of the plan amendment. This is second, and second and final reading, it's also called the adoption hearing, because it's a comprehensive plan amendment. If you recall, last year, the commission, uh, city council approved the ordinance on first reading, it was transmitted to the state reviewing agencies, state reviewing agencies looked at it, and didn't provide any substantive comments regarding the proposed changes related to the minimum requirements of peril of flood. There were some technical comments that were made by one of the agencies regarding an unrelated matter that does not need to be addressed in this ordinance, so the ordinance is ready for final adoption.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. This is a public hearing item, counsel, if we don't have any technical questions, now, well, we can ask those now, for city staff or anything related, we'll go to public, and then come back, discuss it further if we need. Are there any questions at this time? Seeing none, this is a public hearing item, if anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward. And I, and I did confirm that one of the participants, they said it was on their end, I didn't know if no one was on, or if it was on our side, they believed it, it was on their side. Let me just check here and make sure no one's on, and I think as a, as a matter of, if this doesn't timeout as fast, maybe we can, at the end, after this meeting, change this so it doesn't lock. Yep, confirm, I see no one on. So with that, we'll go ahead and close public hearing, bring it back to the council. First one of the year, final reading. Anything?
Well, I, I know Zach probably worked on this. Did you work on this? Would you mind giving us just a real high-level overview of any changes that may be in here, and updates, just so that, because I've gone through it, but I don't, I didn't have anything to compare it to.
Yes, that's an easy answer, there are zero changes from the first time.
Okay.
It is identical. It is identical. It's exactly as it was in December.
Okay. But I mean, prior to the, the one prior to that, okay, so the, was, were there any from the, any changes from the prior years or whenever the last time this was done?
Yes.
Okay. What were those high-level changes? I'm sorry, Zach.
So there is a track changes version in the agenda, if you guys wanted to see.
Okay, those are the ones in the back.
Yeah, so those are the changes that have been made.
All right.
I'm unaware of when the original text was written for the sections that are being changed, but it was a long time ago. We found references to things in twenty-ten, twenty-fifteen. That might as well be two centuries ago at this point. So, you know, on a broad level, the comprehensive plan changes fall in line with the peril of flood, state legislation that we have to follow, of which we are not in compliance with at this moment. Doing this will bring us into compliance with that, which will be good. And it basically allows the city to begin the code changes to make residential and commercial properties more capable of withstanding storm systems, weatherization, elevation of structures, you know, basically allowing for more low-impact development-style things, reviews of, you know, how developments are put into place and whatnot. So it's a really timely update that we frankly should have done a little while ago, but I'm glad that we're here now. So this will be good, and then we can tell the state we're no longer out of compliance.
And it appears that a lot of it is clarifications and cleaning up verbiage.
That's exactly right. I think it was a little, comprehensive plans are always meant to be a little broad, but I think we were able to tighten up the language a lot and be, allow us to be a little bit more focused in what we're doing, to make sure that when people want to develop on this island and they want to come here, that they're basically following some rules and that we can make them a little bit more accountable to ensuring that they don't, in their development, hurt anybody else while still maintaining proper economic development for the city. So that will give us a little bit more teeth to do that. And once we retransmit back to the state, we'll begin those code updates immediately. We'll have the leeway to do that. And all those code changes will be brought back to council for your review.
Okay. Thank you so much, Zach.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Zach. Zach also for giving a three-minute summation of a two-hundred-page document.
He did great to me.
That's what happens when you've been doing it for two years.
No, thanks.
Memorized.
Great, that's great, Zach.
I see it when I go to sleep at night.
Yeah, this was a big one. Yeah, four hundred thirty-something pages.
Yeah, it was.
I, just a positive comment, like page four and the track changes, no need to go to it, but, you know, little changes like policy CM one-one-four, it says, collaborate with the county, state, and federal governments in the orderly and balanced utilization and preservation, consistent with, it had sound, or with conservation principles, and it changed it to data-driven. I love those little things that you can actually do something with that. And it's not as vague in a very specific way. And I think it's, I think it's good, and I know this, a lot of work went into it. So the next step, I mean, we adopt this, and then?
The next step?
Any other action needed?
No, once, once this is adopted, we'll tell the state that it's good to go, and it will be put into the comp plan. Comp plan will be amended, be up on the city's website, as that's the new language. And then my team starts systematically redoing the code to do what the comp plan says we can do now. So it allows us to begin the changes expeditiously.
And it's needed to happen for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, or we're changing the code and it doesn't align with the comp plan.
No, they have to talk. They have to talk.
Councilmember Willis, anything? Councilmember Jackson?
Nope. I just want to thank Zach for all his efforts, just as usual.
Thank you.
Great job, Zach.
Appreciate your support, as always.
I'll make a motion. We adopt ordinance number zero one twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Callum, second by Councilmember Willis, to adopt ordinance number oh one twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion, debate? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Callum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis?
Four.
It's unanimous.
Ordinance oh one twenty twenty-five passes unanimous, four oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Big step in the right direction today.
Okay, well, that now brings us to, got my page, the end here. We, unfinished business, we don't have anything, we don't have any items for discussion. We are now down to item number eleven, reports. We do have a monthly financial report that was provided for us, and I think at this time, we'll typically do, if anyone wants to give a brief report, we can do that. No particular order, counsel? We're at the end here.
I would like to commend Molly and her, her group for their diamond award at the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council meeting for the Cape Center. That was, it was very well-deserved, and they represented the city very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, any reports?
Well, I wanted to talk about, and I'm glad Molly's still here, talk about the tennis courts and what a great job Marcy did. During our January meeting, we had all of the tennis players that were upset with the surface of the court. They were looking at, or we'd been given a figure of five hundred thousand dollars to redo all of that. And Marcy came up with a temporary solution of moving a pickleball court and a tennis court to get players off of that depress, depression. And that ended up giving Molly, it appeared to me, after attending the Culture and Leisure Services Board meeting, that it gave Molly the time to be able to actually get bids in for the work that we have requested be done in our last, in our budget for this year. So the five hundred thousand dollars was not necessary at this time. And with Marcy having come up with that solution, it took players out of harm's way on that court that had the depression. And now we have time, or Molly has had time to work on it. And the original discussion that we had last year during our CIP meetings of resurfacing and fixing that one court is going to be able to move forward, and she's worked, she's gotten bids in and that sort of thing. When we received the feedback from the tennis and pickleball players, no bids had been received at that point. So now we've got more solid information that we can look at, and they have been working hard on this. So, and I thought Marcy, I should say something, because Marcy really did come up with something creative to take care of making sure our players were out of harm's way on that part of the court that was, has the depression in it. So thank you, Molly, and thank Marcy for us, and just want to let you know that.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, believe it or not.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
City Attorney? In interim city manager?
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk? Brevard County Sheriff's Office. Seeing none. Any other reports from anyone who's still with us? Thank y'all for staying with us. I'll end with this. I'm very honored. We have an awesome team that puts this together. Again, hats off to Molly, Amy, Zach, interim city manager, and probably even Lisa, all who are involved in the state of the city, which was just handed to us here today at the meeting. It's always beautifully done, and a lot of work goes into it. I play a small, very small part of it, and it's always done first class, so thank y'all very much, who's a part of putting this out every year. Yes. So spread the word, there's going to be some printed copies. There is a new, I think, an online flip book, I believe it's called. You might have seen other cities, I think Titusville might use it, similar to Canaveral Explorer. And it's a digital way to easily view and navigate the state of the city. This is something our charter and code requires us every year. It's been going on in the city for years. And when you look at what we're putting out today compared to two years back, is it's a very high-quality production. I'd go a step further, even compared relative to other cities. Very proud of it. It's very professional, and I use it. I go back when, if I'm going to go give an update to anyone, it's like a little handbook, the state of the city, and that's really for all of us, is high-level, what's going on, what are the big things? This is it. I think the plan is, today's the eighteenth, the twentieth, here in a couple days, going to try and get it out on the social media channels if everything goes well that day. And there's a video, promo video. Dylan and his company and their team, again, an amazing job putting together the video work, and he's been with us for a few years now helping out. And I, one thing I noticed this year is as we're doing events, like the CO, or the Veterans Park, the Rain Garden, you look out, Dylan's there, and he's taking video, and he's kind of aggregating this, and we get to see glimpses of it. And so he, he gets, to have him help us and provide that service to the city really puts us, I think, up there. And in the future, one of the things, as we get in the budget, kind of a transition state of the city, we put this out, but, and I might have briefly spoke to Zach or the farmers about potentially doing some more on the things that are really important to us and matter. I know that internally, we're doing ongoing educational videos that Zach and the team is doing, which is really helpful, but being able to potentially look at other areas where we might utilize that, because like they say, a picture's worth a thousand words, a video's worth a million. I mean, it can really help be used as a tool for the right things. And so as we get into the budget season this year, one of the things I am going to bring up is making sure that we not only keep that, but potentially expand. And one of the things I'd like to add is getting the other council members an opportunity to be a part of those videos as well, and certainly, obviously, the key staff in their departments. And so we're talking about next year's budget, but there's things we're all passionate about and give the community a chance to meet their council. And we can think about ideas and stuff, but don't want to take away from what we were just handed tonight and the hard work. State of the City is out, so go Cape Canaveral, that's awesome. Thank you again. The city manager recruitment forum, town hall-esque?
Yeah.
Is coming up on the twenty-sixth. I'll let you touch on that. That's a, mark your calendar. The Sea Grapes, I mean, we got that awesome presentation tonight. We obviously heard the public comments, we know the history with Phil Warren, we've heard. If there's any thing that we can do, as Councilmember Willis was saying, to standardize that, to make that clear, so that we're not figuring it out, I think we all have a desire to do that, because there are, I mean, not even speaking, just emails from beach ends that have inquired, I can go back through. It is, I think, a demand out there on the city-owned properties. And I think we heard that loud and clear earlier, but I had that as a note, just to drive it home. There's a roundtable with the port and here in a couple days, I think on the twentieth. Congressman Herodopolis called, I believe reached out to the port, Captain Murray, and asked the representatives from the port district, Cape Canaveral, Cocoa Beach, Cocoa, Rockledge, Titusville, mayors, vice mayors to come. I'm going to, I plan on being there. Mayor Pro Tim hopefully can be there as well, and I'll be providing, I don't know what the congressman wants to speak about. I would imagine he wants to just listen. So if there's anything, if there's anything port-related, there's a lot port-related that we need to talk about from city staff perspective, or I want to make sure I'm going in representing the city well. So a little bit of short notice, I'm going to listen and learn, but perhaps I can get with you, John, before I go, so you at least have a one-pager. I already started, I already had some points, because we had just met with them, that I can, I think, even recycle for the congressman. The port does a mayor's breakfast with all the, the mayors within the port district. We just had that, and so we've already, it's coming off fresh to meet with Congressman Herodopolis. And last is the live stream. I know tonight, we tried a method that, we didn't get to test it live, but it sounds like we did some tests today prior. Hopefully, we can get that. I know, I don't think we've actually met about it, but just want to state that the two-way participation is really important to me. But I'm just one, and I know what I, but it's also important that it's not a stress on city staff. So I Am Solutions was kind of this contractor that could come in and alleviate that and some other ideas. Whatever we need to do, I think, to alleviate, take the pressure off city staff, but ensure we have it. And if I can help, I will support that we can make that happen. But counsel, before going, do we support the two-way participation? It's had its high points of COVID, hundreds of people, and we'll call tonight a low, but I think confidence is sort of diminished, because we've had some challenges. But if there's another program, whatever we need to do, I fully support it. I know that was long, but that's it.
I just wanted to express again the importance of the recruiter meeting with the public for their input on the city manager recruitment and how we are really looking for involvement from the residents, what they, what they're looking for, what they're expecting. So, is it, is it advertised on the board out front?
The forum?
Is it out there? We'll get it on there.
Okay.
We have a, we do have a new employee who's working that. We'll, we'll get it out there.
Yeah, I just, I think it's real important that people know.
I may, you know, I may have to get with IT on that to help out, but, because I know Daniel used to do that for us, and we have a brand-spanking new employee, so we'll, let me, we'll make a note, we'll get that out there. I mean, it's the twenty-sixth, today's what, the?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth? Okay, so we'll get it out there.
Yeah, sooner the better, you know, so.
It is on social media, though. I think it.
It is.
Promoted. I plan on sharing that tonight or tomorrow as well to help.
Right.
Thank you. Okay. Leave anyone off? I think that's it. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn.